Leading's called to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Stanger?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a forum.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I move for the approval of the Journal of Meeting of February 18th, 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries, the Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Madam Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, or building bridge matters this evening, so move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one, 4th District.
Hold on one second. There we go. Receive file and county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, all districts.
Receive, file, and refer to the county auditor, and that will be the order.
Item number three, 2nd District.
Receive file and council's order of January 21st, 2014 regarding petition of far creation of 10-30 Woodcrest Terrace Drive Community Improvement District be rescinded. Development plan be referred to the Department of Planning for Review and Recommendation, and the amended CID petition be referred to the county council for review and determination that the petition has met the requirements of section 67.1421.2 RS Missouri.
Second.
So.
Oh, no second on it? Okay.
So ordered.
Item number four, 5th District?
Doors may not have a second. (laughing). So ordered. Try to read it first time. Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number six, 7th District?
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seven?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number eight?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, 4th District?
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 10, 6th District?
Receive file and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11, all districts?
Receive, file, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Under zoning matters, item number one, 6th District?
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 6th District?
Uh, receive and file.
So ordered. I'm sorry. Item number three, 6th District?
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Under other communications, item number one, 4th District?
Receive file and refer to county executive?
So ordered.
Item number two, 6th District?
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, 1st District?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number four, 6th District?
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
County Executive, do you have your points?
Yes, Madam Chair, I understand that Mike O'Meara indicated that he's endorsing my selectee for the Police Commission, which is Lori Restfall. Well, I talked to her about several weeks ago about being a member of the Police Commission, and she indicated she'd be more than happy to do it, so I think that it should be an expeditions process if we go forward. But again, we going through that process, and she's agreed, and I'm thrilled about that she's willing to represent St. Louis County on the Police Commission.
Glad you took it into my consideration, that we needed a woman on the police board.
I've always said we need a woman on the police board. I think Colleen Wasser indicated that several months ago, and I told her then that I would make sure that the next one will be a woman, and I kept my word.
Glad for that.
No special reports of, uh, reports of special committee tonight, so we move to the public forum. We have five speakers. Our first speaker is Alan Lederbrand. I'd like to ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is Alan Lederbrand. I live at 3918 Jacinto Drive in LeMay, and I'm here before you to ask you to vote down the resolution that's being put forth. Missouri voters have already voted on this twice and have overwhelmingly rejected it, so I don't know why this is being put forth by the county. And the second item is, why are we looking to, do we hate the residents of St. Louis County in letting them rent their homes? Why they need a license now? They have to get an occupancy permit normally to, you know, when you have somebody else move in, but now we're gonna force somebody to have to go get a license to rent their home? And many times, people rent their home because they need to, they can't sell their house right now, maybe they have to move, you know, because of their work, they have to leave the area temporarily, but they wanna hang on to their house, they're gonna be back in a year, or they can't, they bought their house in the middle of the recession, and they're underwater, and they're being forced maybe by, they have to move, so they're hanging on to it. I have a nephew who's in that situation. He's renting his place right now because he can't sell it for what, he'd have to take a loss, so he's hoping that the economy will come back, the value of his home, so you're gonna force him now that he has to get a license to rent his home, and everything's been fine. We've been doing this for years in the county, so I don't understand the whole purpose of why now you're thinking that, you know, a person needs a license to rent their home when a permit's been, you know, fine and working great for years. So I would ask you to just please, let's not tax the residents of the county any more than need be, and I just think this is just, somehow you're trying to get more money out of the residents of St. Louis County, and I oppose that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tony Pozosa?
My name's Tony Pozosa, 9700 Antigo Drive, alderman from city of Green Park, and also candidate for county executive. I'd like to congratulate Executive Dooley and Councilman Stanger for filing today, as I did, and I look forward to the challenge and debate in the coming months. I am here to speak to you regarding the residential property license. I disagree with that. I think that we need to not continue to look for ways to tax the residents of St. Louis County. We already require occupancy permits. I don't think we need to impose any further restrictions on people managing their property the way that they want to. I think that's something that's guaranteed under our constitution, and I'm sure it's in our state constitution also. We have current regulations, we have enforcement through the Problem Properties Bureau. I think if we have any problems with rental properties, they should be handled through those departments, and not looking to put additional taxes on the residents of St. Louis County. So I would encourage you to vote no against this resolution and protect the property rights of St. Louis County residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ed Weisbart?
I'm Ed Weisbart. I'm a family physician. I volunteer on faculty at Washington University. I volunteer on the Board of the St. Louis Academy of Family Physicians, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Consumers Council of Missouri, where I'm the vice president there too. As a physician, I see, I'm speaking in favor of your resolution to expand Medicaid. As a physician, I constantly see patients who are picking literally between their blood pressure medications and their rent, and often don't get their blood pressure control. I see people who take their insulin every other day because that's all they can afford. I heard a friend of mine, two days ago, just the most recent story, tell me of a 28-year-old who died two weeks before January 1st because he couldn't afford to go, risk afford going to the emergency room, and instead, he just let his appendix rupture, and he died. These stories happen all the time, all the time. I see these stories all the time. So I'm here to tell you that the decision of expanding Medicaid for our state is, has many arguments, which you'll hear more of from the next speakers, but to me, it's an issue of life or death. It's about life and death. Studies show that roughly 700 people in our state will die needlessly if we don't expand Medicaid, and if we do expand Medicaid, that's 700 lives per year that our state won't lose. So, that's, and I can believe that from my experience of seeing these kinds of stories I just described to you. Financial barriers to healthcare are overwhelming for low-income people. Medicaid is the only safety net low-income people have, so I urge you to consider expanding it as we're talking.
Thank you. Alex Halen? And after Alex is Richard Von Klavon?
Close.
Close.
Hi. Oh, was that ready? Hi, my name is Alex Halen. I'm a graduate student at St. Louis University, simultaneously pursuing a law degree and a master's degree in public health. I'm here today to ask the county council to pass a resolution in support of Medicaid expansion. Medicaid expansion is both the smart thing to do and the right thing to do for the citizens of Missouri. A resolution from this council would show strong leadership and a great understanding of the needs of our community. Currently in Missouri, Medicaid only covers adults who are parents if their household income is below 18% of poverty or less than $3,612 per year for a family of three, and adults with disabilities if their income is below 85% of poverty or less than $9,920 per year. All other adults are not eligible for Medicaid. Medicaid expansion allows a state like Missouri to include all adults who make at or below 138% of the federal poverty line in their Medicaid program. This amounts to $16,105 per year for a single person, and $27,310 per year for a family of three. Medicaid expansion is the smart thing to do for Missouri. First, Medicaid expansion brings billions of dollars to our state. The Medicaid program is funded with a federal match, meaning the cost of the program is paid for by both Missouri and the federal government. With Medicaid expansion, the federal government will pay 100% of the costs for Missouri's Medicaid expansion through the end of fiscal year 2013. After that, the federal government will gradually decrease its contribution, but the federal contribution will always be at least 90% of the cost in 2020 and beyond. These federal funds are taxed dollars Missouri citizens have already paid to our government. Expanding Medicaid would allow Missouri to bring those funds back into our state to help our own communities like St. Louis County. Medicaid expansion is essential in keeping our hospitals strong and able to continue to serve patients. In the coming years, hospitals will face cuts to payments called "dish" payments they receive from the federal government. These payments help to compensate for the free or charity care hospitals provide. A decrease in these payments will hurt hospitals and prevent them from hiring more staff and serving more patients. For example, Christian Hospital right here in St. Louis County will lose $30 million in decreased dish payments. The Medicaid expansion will help compensate for the hospital's loss of this money. If Missourians have insurance when they go to the hospital, the hospital will then get reimbursed for the care they provide. Additionally, Medicaid expansion will save and create 24,000 jobs, with 4,000 of these jobs being created in St. Louis County alone. Many of these jobs will be at our hospitals. Medicaid expansion is also the right thing to do. The Institute of Medicine tells us that having healthcare coverage saves lives. If Missouri expands Medicaid, 300,000 Missourians will gain healthcare coverage. Over 10 years, Medicaid expansion will save almost 15,000 lives in Missouri. You can read the rest of my testimony, I provided copies, but in closing, I urge you to pass a resolution supporting Medicaid expansion. Thank you.
I was right on the first name, right? Richard?
You're right on, Richard. I have a tricky name, and even worse handwriting, so my last name is Von Glahn.
How do you spell it, the last?
V is in Victor, O-N, space, G-L-A-H-N.
Thank you.
So I am here tonight as a representative from Missouri Jobs with Justice, as well as the Missouri Medicaid Coalition. Missouri Medicaid Coalition is coalition of over 300 organizations, there are social service agencies, it's the Chamber of Commerce, it's the Hospital Association, it's the AFL-CIO, it's our local businesses, our churches, our communities, and we are all supporting the resolution to, the resolution that you're taking up tonight to support the expansion of Medicaid in this state because we know it is the right thing to do. I come from a background in organized labor, and I can tell you, my experience has been when we have had 1 in 7 of Missourians uninsured, as they currently are, that those costs, you know, people still have to go to the hospital, they still have to get coverage. It's more expensive when it's emergency care than it's preventative care. A hospital might absorb some of those costs, that's a drain on our hospitals, but they pass some of those, they try to pass some of those costs onto insurance companies. Maybe an insurance company tries to absorb some of it, but then they have to pass those costs onto our local businesses, who then pass it onto our local workforce. You know, when I ran a small business of six employees, I saw my healthcare costs go up over 50% in three years. It's unsustainable for our businesses and our workers to be in a state where we allow 1 in 7 of our neighbors to be uninsured, and force them to try to have to only get emergency care and not get the preventative care that we need. It also goes against the motto of this great state, which is "The welfare of the people shall be the supreme law." We take that motto seriously, as I know you do, and I commend you if you take action on this resolution tonight and support it for helping send that message to Jefferson City. Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude the public forum. We'll move on to introduction of bills.
Bill number 37, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Community College District of St. Louis County for placement, repair, and operation of tower equipment building and related equipment and accessories for the emergency communication system. Bill number 38, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Gateway Ridge LLC for construction of road and traffic signal improvements along Chesterfield Parkway West. Bill number 39, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the NU non-urban district and the C-8 Plan Commercial District, and approving the application and preliminary plans for development in the C-8 Plan Commercial District of attractive land, subject to conditions, PC 41-13, Sacks Brothers, Patricia Teach.
And I'm sure that is all the bills. Perfection of bills.
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara?
Hold please.
So ordered.
Bill number 15, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara?
Hold please.
So ordered.
Bill number 23, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 23.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 23 is perfected.
Bill number 24, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 24.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 24 is perfected.
Bill number 25, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 25 is perfected.
Bill number 26, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 26 is perfected.
Bill number 27, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 27 is perfected.
Bill number 28, introduced by Councilmember Quinn?
I take it up, I move perfection of bill number 28.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 28 is perfected.
Bill number 29, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 29.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 29 is perfected.
Bill number 30, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 30 is perfected.
Bill number 31, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 31.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 31 is perfected.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 32.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 32 is perfected.
Bill number 33, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara?
Take it up, move for perfection of bill number 33. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 33 is perfected.
Bill number 34, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 34.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 34 is perfected.
Bill number 35, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Erby?
I move for perfection of bill number 35.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 35 is perfected.
Bill number 36, introduced by Councilmember Stanger?
I move for perfection of bill number 36.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 36 is perfected.
Final passage of bills. Bill number 330, introduced by Councilmember Burkett?
Hold, and that will be the order.
Bill number 11, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara?
Hold please.
So ordered.
Bill number 16, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara?
I take it up, move for final passage, bill number 16. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 16, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 16 is finally passed.
Bill number 17, introduced by Councilmember Quinn?
I take it up, I move final passage of bill number 17.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 17, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 17 is finally passed.
Bill number 18, introduced by Councilmember Erby?
I move for final passage of bill number 18.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 18, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 18 is finally passed.
Bill number 19, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger?
I move for final passage of bill number 19.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 19, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 19 is finally passed.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Erby?
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 20.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 20, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 20 is finally passed.
Bill number 21, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Burkett, Wassinger, O'Meara, Dolan, Stanger, and Quinn.
At this time, I move for final passage of bill number 21.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 21, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 21 is finally passed.
Bill number 22, introduced by Councilmember Stanger?
I move for final passage of bill number 22. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 22, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 22 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Madam Chair, we have five this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmembers Dolan, Erby, Erby for Burkett, O'Meara, and Stanger. Resolution, whereas the Missouri General Assembly is urged to take action to expand Medicaid for the residents of the state of Missouri, and whereas the goal of Medicaid expansion in Missouri is to improve health status for all Missouri individuals, families, communities, and workers, and whereas an expansion of Medicaid will ensure more individuals will have access to appropriate levels of healthcare services in the most cost-effective settings to not only improve the quality of life for their families, but also reduce costs to the healthcare system, and whereas expanding Medicaid will, according to a University of Missouri School of Medicine study, create over 24,000 jobs in the state of Missouri and over 5,300 in the St. Louis region, and whereas the county council desired to express its support of Medicaid expansion in Missouri to cover all adults and children up to 138% of the federal poverty level, now therefore be-
I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett? Councilmember Wassinger?
No.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
No.
Madam Chair, on resolution number 1, there are 4 ayes, 2 noes, and 1 absent.
Resolution number 1 is adopted.
Resolution number 2, introduced by Councilmembers Erby and Stanger. Resolution, whereas the Normandy School District enrolls over 4,500 students in preschool through grade 12, and whereas all professional staff members are fully certified by the Missouri Department of Education, with every school having a full-time, non-teaching principal, and with the average length of tenure for teachers being 15 years, over half of the district's staff holds master's degrees, and whereas the Normandy School District provides the experience and support necessary for students to become lifelong learners who are productive, contributing members of society, and whereas the Normandy School District has been working diligently to improve its performance and regain accreditation by the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and is showing much improvement, and whereas the Normandy School District leadership of today understands that its students grow and learn within a complex interconnected web of family, school, and community, and whereas district leaders are designing a quality education that will mitigate the socioeconomic conditions in our community, and have adopted a Normandy School District Reformation Plan with buy-in from the community it serves, and whereas the Normandy School District is facing an immediate fiscal crisis due to the mandate that the district pay out millions of dollars to the school districts receiving students exercising their option to transfer due to the loss of the district's accreditation, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council urges the Missouri General Assembly to pass legislation authorizing the state to provide sufficient funds to the Normandy School District to prevent the interruption of the learning environment, allowing students with objects remaining in the district to complete their school year in their home district.
I move for adoption of resolution number 2.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett. Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn. Madam Chair, on resolution number 2, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Resolution number 2 is adopted.
Resolution number 3, introduced by Councilmember Stanger. Resolution, whereas Officer Joseph Sandeg has been serving the citizens of St. Louis County in the Athens Southwest Precinct since his graduation from the Police Academy in June 2010, and whereas Officer Sandeg prides himself of creating positive relationships within the community while providing the quality-
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett. Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.